Nate's our lead counsel. He's a great guy. Really knows, really knows his stuff.
Yes. Well, we sort of need Nate.
Well, Nate, you with us?
Yeah, because he'll pop up.
She holds the power.
The power. Last month, I was in a Zoom meeting with almost 200 people. And the person playing the button, trying to go down the role and figure who was where to hit the right unmute.
Oh, I need to see how the president is running that meeting tomorrow, if he's going to do it through Teams or if he's doing it. I know he's doing it through Zoom, but we'll all be muted.
Yeah.
Because that's several thousand. If everybody joins.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think he is turning everybody on.
All right, Dan. I'm going to call the Washoe County Planning Commission meeting of Tuesday, June 2nd to order. Can we have a determination of a quorum, please?
Larry Chesney.
Present.
Francine Doncic.
Present.
Jim Barnes.
Here.
Thomas Bruce.
Present.
Sarah Savilecik.
Here.
Kate Nelson.
Here.
Larry Payton. We have a quorum.
Thank you. Commissioner Savilecik, would you lead us in the pledge?
Certainly.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Edwards, are you with us? Then we'll just hold off on ethics law for now and...
Mr. Chair, I'm prepared to read it.
Oh, okay.
That's all right.
Secretary Lloyd will read the ethics law announcement.
Thank you. All right, commissioners are reminded that if, with respect to any matter or any person coming before the commission today, you have received a gift or loan, you have a pecuniary interest, you have a commitment in a private capacity such as a family, employment, business, or similar relationship, or you provided representation or counseling before an agency to a person or entity for compensation within the last year on a matter being considered, you must disclose that gift, loan, interest, commitment, or prior representation at the time the matter is being considered. And you must furthermore abstain from deliberations or voting on the matter if it is clear that the gift, loan, interest, commitment, or prior representation would materially affect the independence of judgment of a reasonable person. Commissioners are also reminded that under the planning commission rules, if you have had any contact outside this meeting with any persons interested in a matter coming before the commission today, you should disclose that matter, or the nature of that contact at this meeting.
Thank you. And, Mr. Lloyd, could you read the appeal process for us, please?
Gladly, yeah. Most decisions rendered by the planning commission are appealable to the Board of County Commissioners. If you disagree with the decision of the planning commission and you want to appeal its action, you may do so in writing within 10 calendar days from the date that the decision being appealed is signed by the planning commission chair and/or the secretary of the planning commission, filed with the secretary of the planning commission, and mailed to the original applicant in the proceeding being appealed in accordance with Washoe County Code. Please call the planning staff immediately at 328-6100 for information on the appeal procedure and application fee.
Thank you. Now, before we go to public comment, I'm going to read an introductory statement for all that are tuned in on Zoom. Any participants wishing to speak via Zoom shall sign in and identify themselves with their first and last names when they are called upon. If you are not a panelist and you wish to speak, please only click the raise hand prompt symbol during the public comment portion of the item you wish to speak on. All panelists on the Zoom should mute their mics until they're ready to speak. If anyone is having difficulty hearing the audio through Zoom, it may be helpful to use earbuds. That's an important thing. In order to be able to see chambers and presentations, please ensure you open an additional tab to stream Washoe County TV live or YouTube. Please be aware that YouTube may have a delay versus the actual chamber proceedings. That being said, we're going to move on to general public comment. Do we have any general public comment? Being none, let's take action to approve the agenda. Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Commissioner Doncic was, made the motion, and Commissioner Savilecik seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The agenda is approved. Next is item seven, possible action to approve April 20th, 2020 draft minutes and May 5th, 2020 draft minutes.
Move to approve both sets of minutes.
Who was the second?
Francine.
Huh?
Francine.
Francine, okay. Commissioner Savilecik made the motion, Commissioner Doncic made the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Item eight, this is a consent item. We don't do these very often. There's no public comment on this. And do you want me to read this, or you want to read it, Trevor?
I'll go ahead and read it. I would recommend, though, that you open it up for public comment if any is available, so.
Okay.
It's not a public hearing, but we would still, for consent items, we would still open it up for any public.
Okay. Well, we'll open it up for public comment after that. Now?
Why don't I read this in and then...
Okay.
This is tentative map, case, tentative subdivision map, case number TM 03006 for Eagle Canyon 4. It's an extension of time request for tentative subdivision map, case number TM 03006 for possible action hearing and discussion to approve an extension of time for expiration of the, for the expiration of the approval of the subdivision for two years from July 17th, 2020 until July 17th, 2022. The subdivision was originally approved by the planning commission on June 3rd, 2003 for 527 single-family lots. The planning commission may grant an extension of not more than two years for the presentation of any final map after the two-year period for presenting a successive final map has expired in accordance with NRS 278-360.
Do we have a staff presentation on this?
No, it's a consent item. There's no presentation.
All right, then, is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none? I guess.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I would move to approve the consent item.
Okay.
I second.
Of motion by Commissioner Savilecik and a second by Commissioner Doncic to approve the consent item. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passed unanimously. Thank you. Next, we'll move on to... Item 9A, tentative subdivision map, case number WTM 20-002 Harmony Mesa.
This is a public hearing item for possible action hearing and discussion to approve a tentative map for the merger and re-subdivision of two parcels totaling 6.5 acres in order to develop an 18-lot, single-family residential common open space subdivision. Lot sizes range from 6,000 square feet to 22,000 square feet. The subdivision will have two common areas consisting of approximately 1.3 acres. Approximately 31,400 cubic yards of earth and material will be excavated on the site. This constitutes major grading, which would be included in the possible approval of this application. The application also includes a request of very general setback standards from 20 feet in the front and rear, and 8 feet on the sides per Section 40825 of the Washoe County Code, to 10 feet in the front, 20 feet in the front for a garage, 15 feet on the rear, and 5 feet on the sides of each lot, which would also be included in the possible approval of this application. The maximum density is three dwellings to the acre, and the residential density proposed is 2.8 dwellings to the acre. Representing Washoe County in the matter is senior planner Roger Pelham, who I believe is...
Okay, does anybody have any disclosures, any of the commissioners, either ethics or expertise communications on this?
No.
Seeing none. Roger, your own.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, members of the commission. For the record, Roger Pelham with Washoe County Planning and Development. I am now going to attempt to share my screen to bring my presentation up. One moment, please. And are you seeing my presentation at this time?
Yes.
Very good, thank you. This is tentative subdivision map, case number WTM 20-002 Harmony Mesa. This is a layout, a basic layout of the proposed subdivision of 16 lots. You have a small area down here that is actually industrial, which is not a part, an area here which will become, that is a drainage, will become common open space. Again, the total number of lots is 18 on 6.5 acres, again, with some common open space. This is a vicinity map showing the subdivision as it relates to Harmony Lane here, courts here, side hill here, West 7th is down here. So this is essentially in the northwestern portion of Sun Valley. Again, here we have the tentative layout, open space for the drainage, little industrial area, and the proposed residential lots surrounding what will become, or is proposed to become, Maryland Court. This is a relatively simple analysis. The proposed subdivision complies with the size and density standards. The, again, drainage facilities will be within the common open space area. This is an area where some roads are paved, some are not, because this is a new subdivision. The road for this subdivision and those leading to it will be paved to county standards if they're dedicated to the county or to private standards otherwise. Hillside development standards are proposed, but there is essentially hillside really only in the drainage way. I believe that this will be a benefit to the area. This is kind of the last open area surrounded by developed area and currently does attract undesirable activities such as dumping and blight. This is a photograph of the subject site looking south from the northern portion of the subdivision. This was provided to all of the interested agencies and standard conditions of approval have been recommended. This has been noticed in accordance with Nevada revised statutes and the Washoe County Development Code. There was no citizen advisory board meeting held during the review time period for this subdivision, again, due to our current COVID-19 situation. However, this was provided to each of the members of the citizen advisory board and no opposition was received. Staff comments on each of the applicable findings of fact can be found on pages eight and nine of the staff report. I believe that each of these findings can be made in the affirmative in this case. With that, I have a possible motion shown here that is also included in your staff report, and I am available for any questions that you might have.
Okay, thank you, Roger.
Mr. Chairman, if I might?
Commissioners.
Yes. Roger, in your project evaluation, you state that information submitted by the applicant indicates that 47% of the subject area contains slope above 15%. And so, that's almost half of this development, but you say, when on the map, you say it's primarily in that drainage area. Can you shed some more light on that?
Certainly. There are steep slopes in the drainage area as well as sort of along the periphery, primarily along the western side. Most of that area will be in the backyard of the proposed lots. There are a series of retaining walls which will be in place. We also have conditions of approval that there be a guardrail placed wherever it's necessary so that those areas that are steeply sloped adjacent to public roadways will be protected. This is probably not a typical hillside development in that while there are steep slopes, many of those appear to be created by things other than nature, perhaps by illegal dumping in some cases, perhaps some unpermitted grading over time. Generally speaking, there's not pristine hillsides that need to be preserved in this case.
Okay, thank you. And then one other question, in terms of, in the exhibits where the park planner, she indicated a special use permit. Is that just an error in her writing because this is a tentative subdivision map?
Yes, that's a simple...
Thank you.
Commissioner Doncic?
Roger, just a quick clarification for me. You speak of major grading of approximately over 31,000 cubic yards, so I'm assuming that's all going to be just moved around on the property? Nothing's leaving the property?
That's essentially correct. Primarily, this will be balanced on-site.
All right, thank you.
You needn't do that much, again, to sort of push the hillside back a little bit, get the retaining walls in, get the flat spots laid out for the dwellings and for the roadway itself.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Do we have an applicant's presentation?
Yeah, this is Derek Kirkland with Wood Rogers. We do, I do have a presentation I can run through real quick if you guys like to see that.
Sure.
Are you with me for a second here? Can you guys see the presentation?
Yes.
Sure.
I won't get into too much detail. I think Roger did a good job covering the location. As Roger mentioned, the zoning allows for 18 lots, and that's basically what we're proposing. In regards to the hillside, so you can see kind of the topography with the lots overlayed. And so you can see down here where the channel, the major drainage way or the drainage way is located. Basically, we're preserving that with common open space and trying to pull the lots out of that. So that's really what triggered the common open space development was to cluster these lots in the more gentle slopes of the site. You can see some of the areas that Roger was speaking of in terms of like where the existing dirt road that cuts through the middle of the site. There was some grading for that, and there was obviously some stockpiled material. There's a lot of trash on the site, which our applicant Doug Barker is with us today. When he purchased his property several months ago, he spent quite a bit of time cleaning that up. I really, really feel like this is a good development for this area for infill. You know, help provide some more modern housing for the area and kind of make it an attractive parcel rather than a trash collector. We are requesting with the common open space to go to a 6,000-square-foot lot minimum, with the average lot size being about 10,500 square feet. You can see in the steeper areas where we're kind of pulling those houses back. Here's some photos of the site, and you can see these are just the existing roadway that's graded through there with some steeper slopes and some of the stockpiled material that's out there. And this gives you kind of a good idea of, basically, we're going to be cutting kind of that upper section of the site and pushing that down and kind of filling it in. So that's why you have some fill retaining walls along the drainage ways to protect that. Then you have some retaining walls on the upper side. And what we've done is kind of tried to get creative and really mix in some six-foot rockery walls with some landscape walls and kind of offset that a little bit, rather than just putting big walls, you know, double stack big walls everywhere, just try to kind of break that up a little bit. There is an industrial parcel that's over here, kind of to that southwest corner. That will remain not a part, as it is zoned industrial. And we feel like the drainage way gives some good separation with these pads now being elevated. It kind of separates this from this industrial area to the west. There are existing utilities in Harmony Lane, kind of at the end, and we're actually proposing, Harmony Lane currently, where you see the lighter coloring in this area, that's basically kind of the end of the pavement. And so we're proposing to finish that pavement all the way and finish that intersection to tie into the utilities. But there's sewer water, all the utilities in that intersection there. So in terms of an infill site, it's got utility hookups all ready to go, and we'll be kind of improving a portion of Harmony there. Talk a little bit about the housing that's going to be proposed for the area. So we're looking at anywhere from 1,400 to 1,700 square feet. We've tried to mix in a variety of different floor plans. Modern design, they will include a 10-by-20 detached garage, and these will be starting about the mid 200s. So it's a market rate house that, you know, is attainable for quite a few people. And I think will be a nice product for this area and kind of really clean up this infill site and, you know, be a nice amenity, a nice addition to this community. And so just to kind of highlight, you can see the garages kind of there in the front. With each one, we'll have, it's basically its own 10-by-20 garage, and we've mixed in a variety of different options depending on walls and just how the pads laid out. There will be a variety of different floor plan options for folks. So with that, you know, we have Doug Barker, the applicant, is with us tonight. We also have Michael Vicks, was the engineer on the project, and he's with us tonight and be happy to answer any other questions that you guys might have. There are a couple, we are in agreement with all of the findings. There are a couple that we would just like to ask for some minor modifications, and I'll run through those real quick. Under the, under the planning conditions, planning condition R, it says the developer shall construct vehicle guardrails along the entire length of Stella Drive and Court line. We would just like to have the opportunity to switch vehicle guardrails to a protective barrier. So basically, in that condition, everywhere you see vehicle guardrails, we change that to protective barrier. And the reason for that is, as you see along Stella and along Court, we feel like there might be a better option for the neighborhood than just looking at guardrails. It could be boulders with some landscaping. It could be guardrails, it could be a different type of barrier. We feel like there's more options than just the guardrail. So we are in agreement with that condition. We'd just like to have a little more flexibility on what that protective barrier looks like. And then the second one, under engineering, the traffic section, under, the last one of that section basically says Maryland Court is proposed to be a public street. And so at the end of that condition, the only thing we'd like to add is that, and I believe Roger spoke to it, is if Maryland does become public, then we would look at bringing the entire Harmony Lane up to public standards. But if it remains private, we just would like to add the last, add an additional sentence that says if Maryland Court is proposed to be a private street, renovation of existing improvements along Harmony Lane and public dedication will not be required from Maryland Court to Side Hill Drive. That's, it's basically, you know, we haven't decided if this is going to be private or public yet, and so we just want to keep that flexibility open. If it does become public, we will agree to bring Harmony Lane up to standards. If it remains private, then basically we would do the improvements up to the existing asphalt. So with that, I'll conclude my presentation, and we'll be happy to answer any questions if you have tonight. Thank you.
Okay, do we have, do we have any questions for the applicant? Seeing none. Roger, are you in agreement with the options that the applicant has sprung on us tonight?
Again, for the record, Roger Pelham with Washoe County Planning. Yes, I have spoken with county engineering staff. They are in agreement with the change of the engineering condition, and I am in agreement with the changes to the planning condition.
Very good.
And I'm sorry, Roger, can you let us know specifically which conditions those were?
A moment, please.
First one is R. And the second one is under the traffic, which is LL.
Okay, the engineering condition is 3L-L, and the planning, the planning condition is 1R.
Do we need to include those changes in the motion? I don't believe we... I don't believe we do, do we?
Can we approve the two changes?
Yes.
Yes, that's required.
All right. So do we have any, any more questions for staff or the applicant? Seeing none. Do we have any public comment on this project?
We have a couple people on Zoom for public comment. I'm going to start with Nanette Fink Eaton, and so I'm going to give her permission to speak here in just a minute.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. My name is Nanette Fink Eaton and I appreciate this opportunity to speak. First and foremost, I wholeheartedly feel that this subdivision would be a benefit to the community and we applaud them coming into the community with the beautification of the homes that they are proposing. However, I have two concerns, of which one of them you've already addressed, but I think it needs to be considered greatly. The first issue I have is with the ingress and egress of this subdivision. As it sits right now in its proposal, the ingress and egress is solely predicated on Harmony Lane. My concern is, is that Harmony Lane is not enough roadway to accommodate 18 new homes. You figure with 18 new homes, you have approximately two and a half cars per home, that's 45 cars, and that's just a guesstimate. So with that in mind, it's a natural expectation to see the use of Quartz Lane and that subdivision actually fronts a larger portion of Quartz Lane than it does even Harmony Lane. That's the first consideration. Secondly, my issue is concerning the watershed and how it will be dispersed and re-appropriated once that subdivision goes in there. That's a huge issue. Yes, I know Mr. Pellman has commented on that, as did Mr. Kirkland, but I think it's something that needs to be addressed because historically, the watershed there goes down through that drainage ditch and there's times when it's just a flowing river. So if that is addressed either by adding large culverts, it's not just in that new subdivision that's going in, it would be for the individuals, the residents that are down below it. They could have very negative effects from that dispersment of water. With the comment that Mr. Kirkland added that he was considering should Harmony Lane be considered public and/or Maryland Court, I think most definitely it should be public because when it's public, then it can have the police patrol that area. It's the fact that when it's private property, the sheriff's department can't do anything on it unless of course, there is some kind of criminal activity occurring. But for instance, the dumping or abandonment of vehicles, the sheriff's department can't do anything about it. If it's public, they can. So back to my initial statement, I absolutely think this would be a wonderful addition to the area and we support them going forth. I don't know if they're going to have HOAs on the property or CCNRs, but I think that would be a nice addition.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good input. Any further public comment?
Yes, the next person will be Renee.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Uh huh.
Hi, my name is Renee Hanson. I share the east property line with that subdivision, at least lots one, two, three, and eight, and a tiny bit of nine. My primary question, first of all, what Nanette Fink Eaton said was spot on, 100%. I'm concerned about the ingress and egress only having one route, at least one improved route. Maryland Drive does touch into it, but as I read in the plan, there's no proposal to improve that in any way. And it does seem more likely that Quartz would be the exit, or at least an alternate route, because it takes up a whole side of this development, you know, it borders on a whole long, probably the primary footage is based on Quartz. Anyway, so along with what Nanette said, I agree 100% with that. The drainage that concerns me, that worries me is on lots one, two, and three, they have proposed a rock wall, so, and it will be built up above the property that is now existing there. So I'm curious how the water will fall down from those rock walls onto the existing property, which is mine. And if they've taken that into consideration, I realize that once they blacktop the roads and they rooftop the land, whatever rain falls, well, less of it will be able to soak into the ground itself and will go down into that drainage. And as Nanette had mentioned, it is very fast running water there when we have heavy rains. And I'm curious, they have said that they would like to put in a collection basin, basically, on the opposite side of the culvert, on the, what would be the west side of the road, their road, Harmony Court, as they propose. And so once it comes through there, it then goes through their common open area and then down through my property, which it has for eternity. I'm just curious that now that the rain won't be soaked into the ground and it will all be draining off into that basin, it's going to increase the velocity of the water. And I'm not sure that the culvert, the second culvert away from it, which is on Harmony Lane, it goes under Harmony Lane, if it will be able to accommodate it. Those are my two primary concerns. One other thing I noticed that the proposal said that there were no trees on the property and there, unless they don't consider juniper trees, trees, there's at least 20 of them. So I wanted to bring that up. I don't know if they hope to save a few of them at least because some of them are really beautiful and hundreds of years old. That's all.
Thank you very much. Any further public comment?
We did have another hand that was raised, but it looks like it's been lowered. So unless somebody pops up here in a minute, I'm going to say no.
Okay, seeing no further public comment, I'm going to bring you back to the commission for questions of staff or the developer after hearing the public comment.
Chair Chesney?
Yes.
I have a quick question for Mr. Kirkland. On Exhibit D, you show the drainage and the culverts. Are you guys planning on improving the existing culverts on Harmony Way or Harmony Lane that you're showing on that exhibit?
Yeah, so we will, to answer your question, yes, we will be improving those culverts. So based on the grading and, you know, we're going to be putting in new storm drain systems, improving that culvert, improving the ditch, you know, there's a lot of trash and stuff in there, so we'll be cleaning all that, cleaning all that out. And then in regard to the comment about the rock walls, we'll have to basically build, it's hard to see in the grading plan, but we will have B ditches at the bottom of those to make sure that all the runoff from this site stay on the site and exit the site per code.
Thank you.
Anything else, Kate?
That was it, thanks.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. Call for discussion. Any discussion on the subdivision map? Okay, seeing none, I guess I'll call for a motion.
Our chair.
Commissioner, yes.
He didn't.
I thought you lost it. Commissioner Doncic.
Thank you. I move that after giving reasoned considerations to the information contained in the staff report, information received during the public hearing, the Washoe County Planning Commission approved tentative map case number WTM 20-002 for Doug Baker with conditions as included Exhibit A and to include the two new approved conditions or.
Amended.
Amended conditions, having made all 10 findings in accordance with the Washoe County Code 110.608.25.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Doncic and a second by Commissioner Savilec. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, it passes unanimously. Commissioner, did you hear? Commissioner Kate, vote. Commissioner Kate. Commissioner Nelson, what, what was your vote?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, I didn't hear, did you?
I did.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I got hearing aids.
Well, maybe I need them.
Oh, okay, all right. Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, we're going to move on to item 10A, Resolution to Initiate a Development Code Amendment, case number WCA 20-001, Article 412 landscaping.
Okay, Mr. Chair, for possible action to adopt a resolution initiating an update to Article 412, the landscaping of the Washoe County Development Code in order to a) clarify where the standards of Article 412 apply and b) clarify the process for reviewing, for review of extenuating circumstances for modification of standards, c) clarify the requirements of landscaping plans require, d) require water conservation measures, e) require preservation of significant trees, f) provide for greater flexibility in design of civic and commercial required landscaping, g) clarify the durable materials are required for screening fences, h) update standards for numbers of required trees, shrubs, and ground cover, i) provide standards for revegetation of disturbed areas, and j) update standards for financial assurances. And representing Washoe County in this matter is senior planner Roger Pellam.
Thank you. Do we have a staff presentation on this or?
Roger.
Roger.
Roger, okay.
Good evening again, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Ross Pellam with Washoe County Planning. One moment, please, while I attempt to share my screen. I believe that you can see my presentation at this point?
Yes.
Is that the case? Wonderful. You know, before I get started, I'm just going to say I've been doing a lot of landscape inspections over the last decade or two and what it comes down to really is we'd really like some quantifiable standards as opposed to qualitative standards. And that's really what each one of these things, each part of the amendment is meant to do, is to really create quantitative measurements that we can use and really point to with a much more, much more certain ability. We have not had any updates since the early 1990s. The philosophy of requiring 100% ground cover of all landscaped areas is probably not a great idea, particularly in a high desert environment. It tends to be rather water intensive and probably not beneficial. We have been challenged many times again on the qualitative nature rather than the quantitative nature of our code. This makes it very difficult for myself and my colleagues to enforce in the field when we're actually going out and doing inspections on this. But more importantly, we actually had a group of professionals who volunteered their time. We've probably met about a half a dozen or a dozen times and we really came up with some of the shortcomings. We tried to put those together into this draft that has been provided to you. We understand, of course, this is not a final draft. This is just something that you can initiate, we can then take this out to the public, get further input, and then bring you back a more polished, or more comprehensive, I should say, change to the code. Our next step will be a meeting, hoping that we get representatives from all of the CAFs there, and again, we will have more public meetings. With that, these are just very briefly some of the challenges that we have faced and I'd like to recommend that you adopt this resolution because I'm really kind of looking forward to rewriting this section of code. With that, I'm available for any questions you might have.
Thank you. You, any questions? Commissioner Savilec?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So Roger, and I will be, you're probably the first planner that will hear this question, but all other planners will continue to hear this question. As we do these updates to our development code, I trust that you are taking the regional plan into consideration as you make these changes.
Absolutely, particularly when it comes in the realm of conservation.
Natural resources and regional coordination, yes. Thank you.
Any further questions? Do we have any public comment on this?
We do not.
Do we have any public comment? No further questions. I'm going to close the hearing, bring it back to the commission. Any discussion? Did I hear you, Kate? No?
Nope.
Oh, okay, all right. Then I will ask for.
Mr. Chair.
A motion. Commissioner Savilec.
Thank you. I move after giving reasoned consideration to the information contained in the staff report, the Washoe County, the Washoe County Planning Commission, one, adopt the resolution attached as Exhibit A to the staff report to initiate an update to Article 412 landscaping of the Washoe County Development Code, and two, authorize the chair to sign the resolution on behalf of the planning commission. I further move to direct staff to bring the amendment back to this commission for a hearing within 125 days of today's date.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Savilec, second by Commissioner Doncic. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Then it passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, going to move on to item 10B. This is a, this is a regulatory zone amendment case number WRZA 19-0010, Highland Village for possible action. Let's see, I think we need to, are you ready, Trevor?
He's there.
Yeah, I'm ready.
Okay, you're going to go? All right. Commissioner Lloyd, would you give us the staff report, please?
Absolutely. First of all, the description of possible action, hearing and discussion for an advisory recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners on whether to adopt a regulatory zone amendment, case number WRZA 190010, if it were coupled with an associated development agreement under NRS 278 0201 and related provisions limiting the growth density of 4.2 dwelling units per acre and from low density suburban, one dwelling unit per acre in general rural to high density suburban, seven dwelling units per acre maximum, with the three acres that are currently GR and remain GR. And zoning amendments cannot be conditioned accordingly. The development agreement would be a separate transaction which if approved would limit the development of the property to a maximum density of 4.2 dwelling units per acre for the duration of the agreement. So I am sitting in tonight for Julie Olander. She has had a medical procedure and will be out this week.
Trevor, Trevor, let me interrupt just a second. Are there any disclosures by commissioners ethics or expertise? I needed to disclose that I had a telephone conversation with the developer's representative. There was no discussion of which way I would vote, one way or the other. And so that being said, I'll open the public hearing. And Trevor, would you, sorry for interrupting, but would you continue with your staff presentation?
Of course, thank you. Yeah, so this assignment before you tonight involves a continuance of an appeal of a regulatory zone amendment to the Highland Village property that was denied by this commission in March and it was heard by the BCC. So the BCC continued the matter but remanded it back to the commission for the purposes of providing, providing them with the recommendation relating to the RZA, coupled with the development agreement, limited the density to 4.2 dwelling units. coupled with the development agreement, limited the density, um, to 4.2 dwelling units per acre. So the original proposal was seven dwelling units per acre. The compromise, uh, as suggested by the BCC, is to, uh, establish a development agreement limiting or capping that density, um, to, to 4.2 dwelling units per acre. I'm, I'm trying to zoom and see if I can move on. There we go. Went too far back. All right, so the property is, uh, if you remember, it's located, uh, in the northeast area of Sun Valley, off Highland, just north of Highland Ranch Boulevard. As this commission heard, uh, decided back in March, the original request was to amend the, uh, the regulatory zone from LDS, uh, which is one unit per acre up to HDS, seven units per acre, um, on a little over 50, 50 acres. There's, uh, three, about three acres of GR which, uh, was just proposed to, to remain. See on the slide on the overhead, um, the, the slide, uh, to the left is the existing regulatory zone, which is LDS. The slide to the right would show the HDS, uh, regulatory zone, as well as the surrounding, uh, regulatory zones of, of LDS, open space, uh, and MDS to the south. Got where I'm at. Apologize. Okay, uh, you may remember, the planning commission denied the RZA request on March 3rd, um, as it could not make findings two and four of, of the required findings. The item was appealed to the, uh, the county commission on April 28th, and at that time, the BCC concluded that they could not support the request as proposed, uh, at seven units per acre, but recommended the possibility of a compromise, uh, with the development agreement capping the density at 4.2 units. So to summarize, um, a development agreement, uh, is proposed to limit the density to 4.2 dwelling units per acre. That development agreement, if approved, uh, by the BCC, would be reported, uh, against the property and, and restrict that property, uh, to 4.2 dwelling units per acre. Uh, this item, um, a- as it is right now in a, a continuance pattern for the appeal of the RZA, will be, uh, sent back, um, to the BCC with a recommendation by the commission at a future meeting where they will make a decision, um, whether or not to approve the RZA coupled with the development agreement. Uh, that concludes, uh, my presentation. Uh, I offer a following, uh, possible motion for your consideration, and, and I can answer any questions that you have.
Thank you. Do you, uh, let's see. Does the, normally, the, does the applicant have, have any comments? I, I give the applicant five, uh, five minutes if you have, if you have, uh, comments.
Thank you. Uh, uh, Chairman, can you hear me okay, John Krompadek?
We got you.
Thank you. Uh, Trevor, thanks for the, I won't be redundant to, uh, Trevor's, uh, presentation. I, I hope the commission recognized that the key, couple of key things that have changed since you guys heard this last time. One is a huge compromise. Um, staff noted that we volun, we, we voluntarily agreed to the development agreement. We actually proposed it, because the range of zoning, it can be cumbersome in the county process. It goes all the way from three to seven. When the CAB looked at this, and I believe went and looking through the minutes of your planning commission comments, there was a lot of discussion about seven is too much. Um, I've worked closely with these developers, and they, they don't want seven. They want a map that works at this location with this terrain and the constraints that we have, with appropriate logtizing, and the most important thing they're trying to accomplish is dealing with house practices that are gonna make sense, not just zoning for sake of zoning. So they've already done the map and analyzed the project, the project economics to get to a point of 4.2. So as a commitment to, I've spoken to several of the CAB members. I have spoken, uh, at length with staff. Of course, they were supportive when we were, um, proposing seven. And, um, certainly, it's a much softer request at 4.2. But the commitment, of course, to the citizens where, you know, traffic was top of the list as it typically is, was the compromise and the development agree, uh, development agreement that shores up the, uh, the, uh, maximum density at 4.2. That's for the HDS portion. If you actually look at the map that's conceived for the property, it actually goes down to 3.96 as it's proposed. And so that's really what we're seeking. And, um, I, I have committed to, again, citizens and CAB members, I went down the list of people whose name was in the record and asked them about, uh, uh, the, the reduction in density that will be, uh, you know, locked down with the development agreement, and it seemed to be, um, a lot more receptive to them. We can certainly manage all the impacts. We do have a million-dollar off-site improvement cost for the Sun Valley GID, um, that discovery they did for water and sewer, uh, came in after the, the last planning commission hearing. It is important, again, to, uh, the overall making a project work, making the numbers work is really what it boils down to. So, um, I have a lot more information. I, Mr. Chairman, I've got a PowerPoint, but, um, if, if, if you wanna see it, I'd be glad to share it. I don't wanna take a lot of the commission's time, so I'd, um, ask you to...
I don't, I don't think we need that, John.
Okay, thank you. And, but, uh, please, uh, hammer me on any questions or concerns you might have, um, if, uh, and I'll just stick around. Thank you for allowing me to, uh, present to the commission. Appreciate it.
Sure, thank you. Does anybody have any ques, questions, John? Uh, I, general question. Uh, my...
Your mic's not on.
The red light's on.
Oh, okay, then.
Sorry. Uh, yes, I have a question, uh, of either the, uh, applicant or Trevor. I- is it still proposed that there be a single entry and access to the development on, uh, Highland Park Road with no, uh, traffic control?
Trevor, do you want me to take that? Or do you wanna take it?
Yeah, go ahead, John. Thank you.
Um, I, I purposely didn't show the map, because I find it can be confusing, and again, our, our system is such that we deal with land use and zoning and then project detail. So, but we do have two access points, well separated, and there will be traffic control as necessary. If there had to be a traffic light, that's an example, of course, the developer doesn't have the choice of putting in a traffic light. But if warranted, those are the kind of things we deal with. Just so the commission knows, I heard from several people, and again, if you look at the CAB comments, there was some, uh, discussion, um, largely about what do traffic impacts mean? In this case, it was about traffic control, those interceptions, and several people discussed a safe route to school because there are schools walking distance. And, um, you know, I, I'm 100% confident and committed that we will address each and every one of those concerns at the time of tentative map. You know, that's an intense process, and it flushes out all of those types of issues. So, um, I hope that answers your question, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, John. Is that...
Thank you.
Okay. Um, are there any further questions of staff or the applicant's representative? I wanna thank, uh, Trevor and John. Do we have any public comment? Seeing no public comment, we'll move right along. I'm gonna close the, uh, public hearing, bring it back to the, uh, commission for any discussion. Do we have any discussion on this?
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah?
I'm prepared to make a, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Well, then...
I guess I do have comment prior to my motion. I do applaud, um, staff and, um, applicant for, this is a very unique situation, um, going to the BCC and then remanding it back to consider, um, options. I, I believe that we're moving towards consensus, and I applaud all parties.
And I, I would second...
Thank you very much.
I would second Sir's, uh, comments. So, now I'm gonna call for a motion, Commissioner Savilecik.
I move to recommend approval to the Board of County Commissioners of Regulatory Zone Amendment, case number WRZA 19-0010, if it were coupled with an associated development agreement under NRS 278 dot 0201, and related provisions limiting the gross density to 4.2 dwelling units per acre.
I second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Savilecik, a second by Commissioner Doncheck. Uh, any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, uh, I'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Uh, passes unanimously. Thank you all.
Thank you all for your support. Thanks everyone for working together and compromising.
Hey, you, you guys did a great, a great job in, in negotiating this thing out, and I think, uh...
Thank you very much. Means a lot.
We, we appreciate that kind of cooperation. All right. Moving right, moving right along. Well, let's, uh...
Or do we need to take a break for Mr. Lloyd to get back?
We need to take a little break so, uh, Trevor can...
Come back.
Sprint back down.
I, I don't mind staying back here if you don't mind.
Well, I don't mind.
No, no, so you don't have to...
Kind of enjoy this.
Under item 11, sharing commission items, I would like to state that this is Commissioner Jim Barnes' last meeting. Uh, I would like to thank Jim for all of his service, and, uh, he's been a mentor and, uh, and a friend. And we are going to have a, um, a presentation of a, of a citation of appreciation, uh, for you, Jim, uh, next month. And, uh, if any of the other commissioners would like to chime in right now that, uh, no Jim, we'll get a chance to roast him again next month, but, uh, feel free.
Mr. Chair, um, it saddens me deeply that this is Commissioner Barnes' last meeting. Um, he has been so supportive of my growth through, um, the planning commission and regional planning commission, um, and he has been a true leader and a true consensus builder and a very calming force, and, um, I'm privileged to think of him as a friend as well. Thank you, Commissioner Barnes.
Anybody else wanna roast him?
Next time.
We, we gotta, we gotta a whole month to get, to get ready for you, Jimmy.
Next time. Didn't know this was coming, so I can't. Can't verbalize that well.
Sounds good.
Sounds good.
Okay, buddy. Um, okay.
Thank you for the kind, thank you for the kind words. I appreciate it.
Well deserved.
We're really good, we're really gonna lay it on next month, so, uh, just get ready for it, okay?
Okay, I'll be ready.
All right, buddy. All right, uh, do we have any future agenda items? Seeing none? Do we have any requests for information from staff? I guess, uh, I don't know if this needs to come from staff, but maybe direction from staff. I've been trying to pin down just exactly who's on first base here when it comes to road improvements. Uh, we had a nice presentation from RTC at the Regional Planning Commission meeting the other night, and, uh, they seemed to, uh, talk about, uh, regional transportation, but when it came to, uh, issues like sidewalks in Sun Valley and, uh, widening Highland Ranch Boulevard, then the fingers started to go from, uh, well, it's not our problem, it's between the county and NDOD, and blah, 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 blah. So I'd kinda like if staff could point the commission in the direction of exactly who's responsible for what and when for these road improvements, because as we continue to, uh, approve these large developments, along with the other, uh, two entities, Sparks and Reno, uh, the infrastructure and, uh, not, not necessarily sewer and water, but, uh, road infrastructure is so far behind, uh, development that, uh, it'd be nice to, to be able to ask the appropriate entities what their plans are, uh, for this stuff. So I, I know that, that's, that's a big item there, Trevor, but, uh, maybe, uh, just point us in the direction.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chair, for that. It's really a cooperative effort between, between multi-agencies, uh, whether it's NDOD, RTC, Washoe County. I think, uh, you're, you're on to something, though. It may be very helpful if, if we could have, uh, a joint presentation, um, possibly inviting RTC and, and our own engineering staff to come help answer questions and provide, uh, some, some direction in that regard, regard. I think that could be educational for all of us.
That'd be great.
That would be extremely helpful.
And I think, right now, with what we're dealing with, the coronavirus and all the funding issues, it would be good to get an update as to where, where we thought they were going, to where they might have to pull back, make adjustments, so we know when we're making decisions, what the impacts are with that.
Right. You get, uh, and, just, uh, a, a thought on my part, you know, the developers pay huge development fees when their developments are, are approved and their, and their maps are approved. And, uh, then that money goes into what black hole, you know? And, uh, at, at what time does it get spent? So that, those are some of the questions that, that I, I would like to, to get some clarity on. So anyhow, uh, I think, does anybody else have any, any questions for, uh, information for, from staff? Okay. Do we have, um, any, uh, legal counsel report on...
Mr. Chairman.
Or a report on previous planning commission items?
Mr. Chair, before we move on to that, um, in terms of, um, Trevor, you, in, when you heard at Regional last week, I believe it was last week, all, all my days run together now, um, in terms of, if, if you can continue to update the planning commission on the scheduled additions, um, as the air, the Washoe County, um, plan relates to regional plan.
In fact, uh, you can anticipate, uh, seeing, over the summer, some of those, uh, scheduled additions, at least the short-term additions, uh, we anticipate, uh, we're gonna jump on those right, right away.
And if you could provide a little bit more definitive timeline, um, for when, what your plan is with planning staff to start into the area plan updates, that would be extremely helpful.
Yeah.
Got it.
Thank you.
Any, any other, uh... Trevor, did you have a report on, on planning commission items?
Uh, nothing, nothing to report on planning commission items. Um, of course, you heard the one, uh, item that they heard tonight. Did wanna welcome our newest planning, planning commissioner on board, Larry Payton. I'm sure he's gonna be an absolute, uh, wonderful addition to the group.
Thank you. Yeah. Welcome aboard.
Thanks.
He looks like he already fits in.
Yeah. No problem with verge.
Do we have any, uh, legal information and, or updates?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Hi, Dave.
One, real quick, um, a lawsuit was filed against the county in 2015 for the, a cell tower that was constructed, um, out in the Washoe Valley area, and the lawsuit claimed that the county was negligent in its inspection of the cell tower and allowed it to be built within an easement that served another piece of property out there. Um, the district judge in the case granted my motion to dismiss back in 2015 or 2016, um, and then it sat for years, and it was, um, finally appealed to the Supreme Court when all of the defendants were dealt with last year, and we just got the decision back from the Nevada Supreme Court, and they affirmed the dismissal, um, of the county from the lawsuit. And just to give you a little bit of perspective on it, the inspections that were at the, at issue and the claims against the county took place in 1999. The cell tower was constructed then. Um, the dispute arose, some, apparently sometime around 2006, according to the plaintiff. Um, the lawsuit was not filed until 2013 against the, um, the, the main defendants, I'll call them, the cell tower people and the neighboring property owner and everything. And the county was at its lawsuit in 2015. So I moved to dismiss it based on time. I said it's, the, this claim's expired. Um, and so now we are 21 years past the date when the building permits were issued on that cell tower, um, and, and you'll be happy to know that it only took 21 years to get a resolution, and we're all, we're all done with that one now.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards. I mean, doesn't statute of limitations factor in here somewhere?
Yeah. So... Yeah. So set your calendars. The stuff you, you all are approving right now will probably be.
Not going to worry about it. Thank you.
Yeah. Just so, the wheels of justice turn, turn quickly.
Nate, if I live that long, I'll be looking forward to it, buddy.
Monitoring it carefully.
I hope to be retired by then. But maybe I'll be watching from an island somewhere, you know, whatever, whatever version of Zoom is out.
Thank you, Nate.
We'll be looking down from our spaceships, you know?
We'll have space travel.
Okay. Do we have any general public comment? Seeing none, I'll call for a motion to adjourn. So moved. Then we are adjourned. Thank you all very much for your participation.
Trevor, are you still there?
I'm still here.
Trevor, I did have a question for you that has nothing to do with the planning commission. I thought you'd be back in chambers.
I'll come, I'll come down to the chamber.